Okay. Call to order, the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting of the North Endover Planning Board. Good evening, Jean, could you please call roles?
Sure. Kay Kelly.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Goldberg.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Aye.
And Sean is not with us today. Okay, we have, looks like, three items on our agenda, so we're gonna hit them in order. One-on-one, Turnpike Street, Karen Staffier, VHB, request for extension to September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four approved land disturbance permit. Jean, can you tell us what's going on?
Yep, so in your packet, there's a letter of authorization for Karen Staffier of VHB to speak on behalf of the property owner. In September two thousand twenty-four, the board approved a land disturbance permit to allow for the repaving and restriping of an existing parking area, a parking lot expansion, stormwater and ancillary landscape improvements, retaining wall and utility improvements. Per the stormwater bylaw, all activity exclusive of maintenance in perpetuity must be completed within a two-year period. Upon the expiration of the one year from the date of permit issuance, if an extension hasn't been requested, the permit is deemed to be revoked. Construction has not begun, so no activity has commenced on the site, which was approved under the permit. Construction is planned to start in the spring of twenty-six and will extend beyond the September twenty-sixth permit expiration date. So an extension until December of two thousand twenty-seven would align with the land disturbance timeline with the order of conditions granted by the Conservation Commission, and so that's what the request is, is to extend the land disturbance permit until December two thousand twenty-seven.
Is there anything different onsite, or is it just that things have been delayed?
It's due to budgetary constraints that they haven't started the work yet since September. I've prepared a draft decision for your review and consideration tonight, but it's simply just, it's a two-year permit where, it's different than a special permit, because it's a land disturbance, it's not a special permit, and so the expiration is, all work must be completed within two years. As opposed to a special permit, substantial commencement needs to occur within two years, so the project doesn't have to be completed in two years. So they've recognized they're not gonna finish within that two-year deadline. And they have to ask for the extension a year ahead of time. And so that's why they're here tonight, because a year ahead of time would be September.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was not due to any site changes, so that our findings and our everything is still the same.
Everything as proposed is still envisioned. And the order of conditions is a three-year permit, and so again, this will align our permit with the order of conditions.
Any board member questions or comments?
Jean, in your note, there's some commentary about sinkholes and so forth?
That's next. So it's the other decision.
Oh, never mind. Sorry. That sounds more ominous.
Yes, that's a little different. This is simply to extend the permit expiration date to be, I put December first. They requested through November of twenty-seven, so I put December first, and the bylaw doesn't allow for an extension of only a year or whatnot, it's just at the board's discretion how long you can extend it for.
So, and you had a motion to approve the land disturbance permit with the decision as drafted by Jean?
So moved.
Motion made by Peter. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, so motion would be seconded by you?
No, motion made by Peter, seconded by John.
Thank you.
I try not to motion.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you for coming early. Much better to do it early.
We did some caution. We worked really hard on that together, so.
Yep.
I'll get you a copy of this, Karen, tomorrow.
Okay. Three fifty Winthrop Avenue, DSM Realty, request for an insubstantial change to the February two thousand twenty-four approved site plan review special permit to allow for the installation of under-drain system underneath the parking area and to allow for regrading a portion of the bioretention basin located in the northerly side of the exit-only driveway.
Right, so this is a little more detailed.
Yeah.
So during construction and renovation of the project site between two thousand twenty-four, when it was approved in June of twenty-five, a problem was identified where the large asphalt parking lot between Winthrop Ave. and the retail building began to leak, and sinkholes were observed during excessive groundwater. I'm sorry, observed due to excessive groundwater. It is believed that a perched water table exists underneath the parking lot area following extreme rain events. Stormwater and groundwater flowing down slope from the southeast settles beneath the parking lot and cannot infiltrate. As a result, the project engineer is proposing a pavement under-drain system be installed to alleviate this condition prior to installation of the wearing course of pavement layer. The subdrain system would outlet into the perennial stream that is located along the property frontage to Winthrop Avenue. In addition, they're seeking approval for an installation of pavement under-drain system. They are also proposing to modify the existing grades within the detention basin located over here. So, it's the northerly end of the property, the wet basin one discharges into the bioretention basin. The reason for regrading a portion of the basin is due in part that it has been observed during heavy rainfall events, that water within the retention basin backwaters into wet basin one, which then backwaters into the sediment four bed. The proposal is to regrade a portion of the retention area to create a grass channel swale which will direct rainfall runoff to the rip-roof stone which outlets also to the perennial stream. The proposed changes have been reviewed by the board's stormwater consultant, and the peer review letter is included in the meeting packet. There's two recommended conditions, and the project engineer has confirmed that the same seed mix for the grass channel swale as previously specified is being proposed. And in addition, the applicant has included the addition of riprap at the outlet between the bioretention and grass channel swale and the perennial swale, perennial stream as recommended by the consultant. So she recommended two things, they've already been incorporated into the plan and been confirmed on the seed mix. And so Brian Dutton, the project engineer, is here to answer any questions you may have.
So Jean, the only thing that I had a question on was, so if things are now going more towards this stream, it's been accounted for that this stream can handle this additional, and that's not gonna cause any additional flooding? That was reviewed as part of the stormwater review?
Yep, that was reviewed as part of the stormwater review.
Okay.
It's very sporadic, it's after a heavy rain event, and Brian could speak to it better, but it's something that needs to be addressed now, and if it can, so they've done the southern portion of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And they're proposing potentially to also include an under-drain system in the northerly part, once they get into the repaving of that portion.
Where on the parking lot have you seen the sinkholes?
For the record, Brian Dutton from RJ O'Connell and Associates, project engineer. With respect to the sinkholes, what they are is the site contractor had onsite within the port, within the portion of the parking lot that is going to service the new market basket towards the end of that field, a chase into the perimeter access drive. They had some compressor equipment on the base course pavement, and it was being supported by some jacks. And what happened was, if you recall, during, I think the third week in June, we had, we experienced a heat wave. And what happened is those jacks sunk through the base course pavement of layer, base course pavement layer. And we had the opportunity to observe that, we saw groundwater right below, when it sunk right through, below that, we saw groundwater evidence below the surface. So, where, the site has a history of poorly draining soils. We think with the heavy rains that occurred during April and May, and coupled that with the extreme change in temperature in June, that a perched groundwater table exists, that coupled with the fact that we did observe, the contractor brought it to our attention, that the site is ready to receive finished course paving from the new market basket to the south end of the site where the signalized intersection is. And the majority of where water was weeping through the pavement joints was occurring in the new park, new parking lot for market basket, which intended to serve that area. We also observed water weeping through at the granite curb where it was interfacing with the base course pavement as well with that. So that led us to believe that there is a, the soils are saturated, the groundwater table is perched, and the subdrain system is being proposed to alleviate that condition, especially when it occurs during the spring where we have high rains, and then in the fall, October, November type months, where rains and whatnot prevent it. So we observed the weeping, and we felt that before we could finish, put, install the finished course paving, it wasn't prudent to do that, because I think we'd be having pavement failures at this quadrant of the parking lot within a two-year timeframe. So we want to take a proactive approach, resolve the problem, since there is a significant investment being made at the shopping center today. And although, as Jean alluded to, the northern piece of the parking lot where it's planned, where the existing market basket sits today, to the north where the credit union is, that parking lot hasn't been disturbed yet. But again, the soil strata seems to be consistent, where it's poorly draining, we just want to be proactive and get, if that area of the parking lot needs the under-drain system as well, is that we get the approvals tonight from both planning and next week from Conservation to do so.
So I should have mentioned that they are before the Conservation Commission to amend the order of condition. So where he's asking for insubstantial change to this plan, it does require an amendment to the order of conditions. And I prepared a draft decision which conditions they need to successfully get through Conservation under the same plan without any major changes, or else they have to come back for revision.
Could you just briefly describe the pavement under-drain system that you'll be installing?
Yeah, so the pavement under-drain system comprised of a six-inch perforated PVC pipe that's gonna be wrapped in eighteen inches, encased in crushed stone, and then wrapped with a filter fabric. It's gonna run in, to the plan in a left-to-right direction, fifty feet on center, fifty feet on center between, it's running between the longitudinal islands. Then as you get down to the perimeter access drive, the pipe network will connect at one point, and then there will be a single-point discharge to the perennial stream. We did look at, just by way of background, we did look at alternatives to avoid penetration or connection to the perennial stream, but due to the elevation differential out there, that was the only, that is the low points, the low point on the site, and that was the most feasible location for this discharge.
So you'll be ripping up the pavement to put those pipes down?
We'll be trenching, probably like a two-foot-wide trench. Okay, at fifty-four.
I just wanna note, I don't know if it serves any purpose or not, but I'll note that my recollection is when you came for this permit, one of the questions I asked was water flowing down from that uphill section, and would that affect this project or the work being done? And my recollection is we got abundant assurances that there was no impact whatsoever from that water flowing down. The reason I asked the question at that time was that was not long after we had that horrendous rainfall here in town. So it was front of mind, and I just thought it was worth assurance that there were not gonna be any impacts from similarly extraordinarily heavy rainfall events, and it sounds like in fact, there was impact, and you've gotta correct that now.
I'm not sure of what you're referring to as uphill. This condition is within.
Well, I'm referring to.
If you're talking about the hill in the back, that this is independent of that?
Nope. Down slope from the southeast. Down slope from the southeast, that's what I'm referring to. That's what we're being told is the cause of the condition now. It's believed that a perched water table exists underneath the parking lot area, and following extreme rain events, stormwater and groundwater flowing down slope from the southeast, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
I'm referring to what I presume is your language.
Yes, so.
And that was the area of questions I had asked when you first came for the permit. And, you know, I mean, it's great that you've recognized this, but it just brings to my mind, you know, the board, the board, myself, had asked about whether or not that was gonna be a concern, and we were given abundant assurances that it would not be.
But nothing's actually happened yet, and we don't, and in the parking lot, I mean, they've regraded.
Yeah.
I don't know that this is caused, right, but I don't know that this even caused that. I mean, it just exists.
Well, I'm just going with what.
Right, but this, but that says that this condition exists, but that doesn't mean that this condition was caused by restriping the parking lot or what the stuff that they did.
I'm not suggesting that.
Right.
The question was, in severe rain events.
Yeah.
Would there be a problem with the water flowing down slope from the southeast? And the answer was no, and now the answer is yes.
Well, I think, I think we got two things going on, and I, what I, I think I believe, when I answered the original question, from the pavement, from the surface runoff, from the paved area flowing down to the southeast, it is designed, originally, before we started any renovation, it originally sheet flowed directly into the perennial stream. What we have done as part of the renovation program is we have a perimeter curb along the edge of the perimeter access drive, and we have outlet points, as you can see on the site plan, where water gets to funnel away from the parking lot and into a grass channel swale, and then into the perennial stream. All of that is working, that is working per design, per the way we intended to. What we encompassed was, and what we didn't anticipate on, is the property, or this portion of the site has been, has been in a base course pavement condition since December of last year. And I have been out doing, every, once every two weeks I do a site visit, to observe the conditions at the site and progress of construction, so on and so forth. There was no evidence of any pavement weeping or water weeping through the pavement during any of my visits. As a matter of fact, the visits I did in May, I didn't even observe it as well. It really wasn't until June that this condition, which is, to me, is groundwater condition, kind of surfaced and resurrected to be, to be.
As a result of that piece of machinery that penetrated and you could see the groundwater?
Well, we could see, if the machines, if the jacks, the machine didn't penetrate the pavement, what we did see was water weeping through the joint. So we would have concluded that there was something going on with the water table fluctuation that was creating some issues.
Okay, well, look, I just wanted to explore it, because from my perspective, we've raised the, not this specific symptom, but raised a general question about would water flowing down slope impact any of the work you were doing? And my recollection is at the time, we were given assurances that it wouldn't be, so it's good news that you have identified a problem and that you have got a solution and you're doing it.
Yes.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jean, a related question to Peter's point. Has anybody from our side taken a look at these plans and feel comfortable?
I sent it to stormwater peer review, so of course Lee Witten has done a peer review. And if it was, I think, I'll paraphrase, but if this was proposed originally, it would have the same effect, like, she had no concern that this would change how it was designed originally.
Okay, okay.
And so, and her peer review is included in the packet, and like I said, she had two recommendations, and both of which have been addressed.
Great, thanks, I appreciate your entertaining the question.
Kay, go.
So why wasn't it identified when the original permitting occurred? I just, I understand there was a storm event that kind of precipitated it right now, but wouldn't there have been some kind of analysis down at the groundwater at?
Well, we did have, we did have some soil borings done around the front facade area of the market basket building, and we also had some test pits done within the proposed locations of the, of both wet basins one and wet basins two, which are located in the lower left-hand corner of the table, of the site plan. The indications were that groundwater was, was deep enough that, in excess of four feet up around the, in the upper half of the parking lot area, that this was not going to be a problem. What is happening is, is that the material that was used at this site to create the original mall back, I believe in the seventies, is all fill material, so it doesn't have a uniform strata, and it is filled with, you know, silty sands and so on, so water is getting trapped in the lenses before it allow, it's, the infiltration to the groundwater table is taking a long time because of the poorly draining soils underneath the parking lot area. Again, when we did our preliminary soil investigations, there was no evidence that this condition was going to rise to the level that it needed to be mitigated at that time.
So have you tested the entire parking lot now?
Excuse me?
Have you tested the rest of the parking lot now? Like, it would be nice to have reassurances that now we've tested everywhere to know that we're not gonna have to make other system changes throughout.
Well, we have not, we have seen enough evidence on the southern half of the parking lot, because again, it's in a base course pavement condition, that this, that this weeping of water is existing along the southern half.
So now we think it's gonna be everywhere.
However, we have not, we have not touched or altered the northern half of the parking lot, and the reason for that is because that's where Market Basket is operating today. We do not have, we, we're going to assume that the soil conditions on the southern half of the parking lot exist on the northern half, so we are seeking approvals to extend the subdrain system to that northern half and install it when we do the work on that half of the parking lot.
Okay. Kay, go.
Can I have one more question, and I think it's for you, Jean? What's the difference between the substantial change and insubstantial?
Insubstantial change means it can be heard by the board and voted on without a public hearing process, so if others aren't notified, it's insubstantial in terms of modifying the plan set. If it was deemed to be substantial, then it would be a public hearing process, if others would be notified. We'd open up the public hearing and we'd create a modified site plan permit.
So we have to decide whether this change is substantial or insubstantial, there's, and there's not a set definition for that, it's really, in the past, we've done it, like, are these things that are, is it a large enough change that it might make a difference either in, in the water table, watershed area, or parking, or traffic, or things like that? So, like, similar to waiver requests, really, if we think that there's either a public, significant public interest, or there may be a significant change to the project, then we would say, no, this is not insubstantial. This is a change in the stormwater, you know, the question is whether or not it's, whether or not it's a really big change or not enough to require a public hearing.
In the consultant's opinion, that the proposed, the proposal to intercept the groundwater will not impact the stormwater management previously approved and constructed. So that's, that's the opinion she provided.
So if there was any question that this wouldn't, that this wouldn't be either the same or better, then we, you know, do more testing or whatnot, if they were gonna rearrange the parking lot or rearrange the stores, the stores now and the traffic pattern because of, there was gonna be water developing on one, so they had to rearrange the traffic pattern, that might be substantial. This, where nothing changes, other than we're putting some more stuff underground to make it better, to me, that would be insubstantial.
And is the Conservation Commission similarly have that kind of judgment call about substantial versus, or hearing and not?
I don't think it's the same terminology, but I will say the administrator said this is definitely, they need to amend their order. Other things are things like small projects, or she could administratively approve things, but she's bringing this back to the commission.
And they're gonna have a hearing?
This is all, they're more focused on the wetland, which is the perennial stream, and so they're bringing more water towards that perennial stream. But again, we share the peer review, and so they have the same peer review letter that you have.
Just one more question. Would, if this had occurred after the project was completed and the parking lot was in use and all that, would it have been a safety issue for?
Eventually, it would have been. That perimeter access drive is heavily used. What would have happened over time is the pavement would crack, cracks would lead to potholes, potholes would lead to, you know, more potholes, so, again, with the significant, personally, with the significant investment that's being done at the shopping center and understanding that although the timing of this is not great, they were just ready to get, they were ready, preparing for finished paving three weeks ago. The prudent thing to do is be proactive and take care of this problem now, since we know about it, as opposed to having to deal with this in two years' time.
I get a motion to approve the insubstantial change.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we know when we're on, are we on for August still for opening?
Probably not, I think it's gonna be labor, around that Labor Day timeframe.
Okay, fair enough.
Right before dinner, my wife was at Market Basket, and she was talking to the guy, and the guy said, if one more person asks me that, I'm gonna kill.
Yeah, they've had some challenges with materials and whatnot, and kind of the latest things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Zero Prescott Street, Mass Housing Site Approval Comment Request. Jean, where are we at?
All right, so as discussed at the last meeting, Mass Housing is currently reviewing an application for site approval submitted by East Mill Housing LLC. The proposed development consists of two hundred ninety-six units of rental housing on approximately six point one-three acres of land located at Zero Prescott and Sixty-seven High Street, which is the location of the East Mill parking garage on the corner of Prescott and High. The site approval process has offered the project sponsors who intend to apply for a comprehensive permit under chapter forty B. As part of their review, Mass Housing is soliciting comments from the community. On behalf of the board, I've prepared draft comments for consideration. The board may choose to add or delete as you see fit. As a reminder, there was specific findings made to determine site approval eligibility for the proposed forty B project, and only comments related to those findings are taken into consideration. Those findings are included in the meeting packet again, and I carried all other information from the last meeting forward. And again, I just ask you to note that I've done this in bullet format, it's not memo format, but it's going to be compiled with other town comments, so the select board met last night, I haven't had the opportunity to watch their meeting, but they presumably are submitting comments as well. We're gonna compile both planer board and select board into one memo in response. And so, although if you've read my draft here, I include specific traditional zoning language, like, that will be culled out, and it will be summarized into setback discussion density FAR, but not quotes out of our zoning bylaw by any means.
Do you think, Jean, that some of your, some, some of the comments in here, which I thought were on target, considered out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, far exceeds the density metrics previously permitted, actual drive aisle of twenty feet, the ratio compounds the massing on the site? Do you think that type of language will make it into the final memo?
I can't speak to the exact language, but I think the topic certainly, yes.
And do you think sort of the, the, I mean, what, what I thought was good about that language was it was raising, in several areas, the concern about this. And I think it's important that that kind of language be expressed in the final memo. And so with that in mind, I have two thoughts I wanted to share with the board. One is, I would like our submission to be made a record of the planning board, so there's a record of what we have submitted for comments.
Well, we have to vote, if we're gonna submit comments, we have to vote on the comments.
Correct, and I get that, but maybe it's a fine distinction that not only should we vote, but we should have a record made part of the permanent record of the planning board.
I'm not, I'm not sure what that.
Because.
No, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that such thing exists, other than we voted. What we voted on will be.
And these will be referenced in the meeting minutes.
Will be in the meeting minutes.
This document will be referenced.
You can include them in the meeting minutes.
Will be in the meeting minutes.
Yep, we, at the end of every meeting, at the end, end of every minutes is meeting materials, and we document every single document that you looked at.
Great, and not just by the name of the document, but the document as drafted will be recorded in our minutes?
The, the name of the document will be included in meeting materials at the end of every minute. The document itself stays in the electronic packet.
Okay, good.
And, and so that's available forever, but specifically to the subdivision roadway. So I have a draft of what went to the select board for last night's meeting. I didn't check the link to see if this is still intact, but this is the last draft I saw. So emergency access and public safety, the proposed private way serving the site is approximately twenty feet wide due to ninety-degree parking along both sides, which poses potential obstructions for emergency access. So that's how my comment got summarized and translated.
So you're saying that these have already gone forward to the select board?
I've sent, I've sent them to Andrew Supero, who's compiling the comments, and I told him they're in draft format and that they're going to the planer board tonight, and so he's begun compiling a draft memo. and that they're going to the Planner Board tonight, and so he's begun compiling a draft memo.
It seems to me the one thing that we want to do is to ensure, I mean, to some degree, it's their prerogative to put in whatever they want.
Yes.
But that if they choose to excise a lot of it, we should know before it's final and express our disagreement with that, even if it doesn't have any net impact, I think. I think they're going to go with it, but.
That was my second question I wanted to ask, but better articulated by you, that I, I agree that we should have a second bite at the apple to see what they included, not that we would necessarily have a chance to change it, but that we could then express our view of, you know, this looks really good, or we have concerns.
Okay.
So this board meets on August 2nd?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, August 12th. The deadline to submit is August 15th, so I trust that the document will be finalized by the 12th, and we can put it on that agenda.
Great.
And I, I'll, I'll confirm all that tomorrow, but that's what I believe to be the case. And so if you have final comments after the 12th, I'm sure they can be incorporated.
Which they may or may not do anything about.
I would just say that I'm pretty comfortable with the language as it is, but I would not want it to go any further in terms of the, the strength of some of the adjectives. So this, like, the scale and mass could potentially be considered out of character. That's true, it could be.
Just say, no, I'm not advocating for anything stronger.
Right, I'm just, I just, I just don't, I think that is a fair concern, but I, it's also not a, I don't think it can be a declarative statement that it is out of character because we haven't seen the whole project, we haven't gone through the whole process. So I think, I think, I just, I think we can raise it as a concern, but I'm okay with it being tempered.
Well, yeah, tempered is fine, being totally new is, I think what we're concerned about.
I think this is more than neutral.
Fair enough, I don't mind somebody editing a little bit and softening it, that's fine, I get it. And, you know, maybe there's one thing for a reason you have to take out, I'm fine with that too. But if we put in 10 things and they take nine of them out, I don't.
Fair, I, I think as it is, I'm, I mean, I've reviewed this, Jean and I went over this before, I'm fine with the language as it is.
When you say this, are you referring to the draft we have or the thing the Select Board had?
Our draft.
Okay, good.
Our draft letter, right, yeah, the three-page draft letter.
And I'm fine with it.
Which is what went to the Select Board, the, the current one. The draft.
I'm not sure, our draft went to Andrew, he incorporated comments, and I'm sure I've tweaked it since that day.
This is what, so this is what we have an opportunity to vote on and say, we're submitting from the Planning Board, and we're asking the town to convey these thoughts to Mass Housing.
So in that, I have, I do have one question, just in reading the complete document, is, are we, as a town or as a Planning Board, just making comments and conclusion, or even tentative conclusions, like, you know, there's not enough space, it's not wide enough? Or are we saying, and, and if it isn't wide enough, here's the recommendation? Because a couple of them have recommendations, here's the fix. Or are we just pointing out things and, and hoping they do something in response?
I think what they want, I, I think they don't even want that much, they just want, hey, give us your thoughts and make sure this is an appropriate site. I think we're giving them more than, Mass Housing more than they want, and they're going to ignore most of this. So, but to the extent that we can identify things that could be, I think what our job right now is to identify things based on our experience, and having done many of these projects, especially in this area, of what are going to be concerns to the, to a board and to the neighborhood, and what they should be focusing on. And honestly, this is more a blueprint for the ZBA to look at later on than it is for Mass Housing, because Mass Housing's not going to care about 90% of this. They care about who owns the property, is it financially feasible, and is this an area which should support housing? That's what they care about. They don't really care right now about, is it four stories or five stories? They don't care about the parking and the traffic, they don't care about any of that right now. All of that gets sussed out at the ZBA hearing. So to me, this is more a overall document of preferences and concerns and highlights and says, hey, let's talk about this now, or get this out now so that it can be reviewed later on. That's what, to me, this is going to do. Really, Mass Housing doesn't really care about this, to be honest.
What is your example case of a, of a, and here's the fix? I don't see any of those, I see recommendations, but not, and here's a fix.
So, well, let's do one of them, go ahead.
No, well, Jean was asking me a question, but I don't have to. Well, so like, where it says screening is a concern and retention of as many mature trees as possible would help. To me, that's a recommendation, okay, we, we set out.
That was my recommendation.
Okay, and that's, it's an excellent recommendation.
Yes.
No, but, but, you know, so we kind of describe the problem and then say, you know, that if this is a problem, here's the quote fix, or here's a way that that could be addressed. And a couple of them don't do that, they just talk about the problem and then just kind of end.
Well, some of them are subject for ultimate negotiation, I mean, like, the, the density and the height and stuff like that. You don't, you can't put it in something like this, because that's back and forth.
And we haven't really examined it enough to know, is four stories right, is five stories right, is, is 296 units right, is 250 units right, is 200 units right, is 150, is zero? We haven't really done that. All I know is that screening is always a concern, and those trees are large and beautiful right now, so we should do as much as we can to keep them. So when there's easy things that we know, we can put it in, but I think we just can't make assumptions on a bunch of things that we just don't have enough information about at the time, at this time.
So I wanted to go back to a comment you were making earlier, just to paraphrase that, you know, Mass Housing is only going to care about so much, they won't care about most of this. So I understand that our draft comments are, in all likelihood, more than anybody wants to hear, but the dynamic there, from my perspective, is if it's abbreviated, then we're susceptible to, well, you didn't have any specifics. When you provide some specifics, which I think this is really quite a good draft with some specifics, then, well, it's more than we really wanted. And I, I'm glad we're erring on the side of more than maybe they wanted, but the benefit is, we've been able to list a series of specific concerns. And I think that's our obligation, and so I, I just think it's a, a well-done draft, and I'm glad it will be. The draft as a whole will be part of our permanent record, and I'm very hopeful that we will also have an opportunity to see the final consolidated draft. And what I will be interested in seeing is to what extent have the Planning Board concerns been included? And I'm not expecting verbatim, I'm not even expecting all of them, but nor am I expecting none of them.
I agree, and I think I'd rather be over-inclusive than under-inclusive, but just remember that when Mass, there's two different parts to this, right? There's Mass Housing's site approval, right? And they're going to find whether the proposed, can we go to the findings for site approval, Jean? Yeah, there's, that the proposed project appears eligible under the Housing Subsidy Program, generally appropriate, conceptual project design is generally appropriate, financially feasible, land value, applicant-zenable, applicant controls the site. Most of our stuff is not relevant to that, so I think we should still submit, as is, I like it, I love the specifics. I think it's a good guideline for what we would like to see with the project. But when we get the findings back from Mass Housing, I just wanted people to remember that it's not going to talk about most of the stuff that we're talking about.
Right.
But ultimately, when it gets to a ZBA hearing, that's when all of this stuff can come up. So I think we're setting them up and giving them some assistance to be able to, hey, we've already, you know, set this, and more things are going to come up, but at least you know that these things people are talking about and thinking about and need to be discussed.
I think that's a great point.
It's, it's for the long game.
To give some hopefully useful information to the ZBA, but that begs another question. Will the ZBA have access to the consolidated memo that the town forwards to Mass Housing? Certainly, yes. Will they also have access to our more detailed draft for those points which do not survive into the consolidated memo? Now, you could say, well, sure, they can go into our files and they can dig around and they can find this more thorough draft in our files, but is there also a mechanism by which the Planning Board could forward? Here's our full comments, if you find them useful.
So that's a good question. There is a, I saw an agenda item for a ZBA training on 40B.
On Thursday night.
On Thursday night?
KP Law.
It may be good to go, if one of us could go and ask that question?
I mean.
It might be worthwhile.
Yeah, right, yeah, unfortunately, I don't have something on Thursday, but it's all about relationship, I think, to the extent.
Yes, there are plenty of very nice, reasonable people on the ZBA that we can talk to, and that we can get information to, not a problem.
I mean, 10, 10 years ago wasn't so much, but now I think they're more willing to cooperate and partner with us, and that's what we want, really.
Is anybody going to the training that we know of from this group?
I, I just saw it today, so I didn't, I didn't even know what that was.
I am, it's a closed invitation only Zoom that's getting recorded and then going to be made available to the public.
Oh, it's Zoom, it's not a.
Whether it's Google Meet or Zoom, I'm not that certain, but yes, it's a virtual.
You're going to be.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask the chair if one of us can maybe.
Great.
I'll ask, okay. Sir, you came, I know you asked me beforehand if we would entertain comments, so, so yes, if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, you can. Just understand, you've heard our discussion about what we can and can't do and what we're able to do, so hopefully that helps guide what you discuss with us.
Thank you, thank you, I have appreciated your discussion, it's right on target with our feelings. My name's Michael Hakim. I am licensed as a professional planner and landscape architect in New Jersey, and as a landscape architect in New York, New Jersey, and all the way up the East Coast, including here in Massachusetts. I haven't worked in Massachusetts, I'm retired for the last eight years, but I'm here to represent the owner of 55 Prescott Street, who is right behind this development, and coincidentally happens to be my son, his wife, and his five children.
That is a strange coincidence.
Right, he's, yes, so there's some woods back there, the children play in the woods. Let me just back up, I think, first of all, I think this memo that Ms. Enright, Enright wrote is excellent, it's right on target. I wouldn't weaken it at all. One key issue I think I'd like to see added to it is, if you look at the juxtaposition of where the building is, and the entrance road, and High Street, and then around the corner and up onto Prescott Street, and you envision people who live in this building who desire to go to Prescott Street, I think it's pretty clear that the easiest way to do that is to walk through the private properties on Prescott Street, which is, we would seriously object to. So I'm, I would like to see your memorandum include not just the buffering and the setbacks, but also some type of barrier privacy fence to prevent that easy pedestrian movement or bicycle movement, or whatever it might be through private properties, because this is an established old residential neighborhood, and they have the right to maintain the privacy of what they have. Understand that we don't object to more housing, we don't object to more affordable housing. We understand all of these things are the desire of the state, and they're necessary and needed. But we'd like to emphasize from you to prioritize the protection of the existing residents along Prescott Street. All of the comments are, I endorse, the density is too high, the height of the building's too high, the setbacks, 35-foot dimension is only 16 and a half feet, those are variances. And even in that 16 and a half feet, they have a retaining wall and a, and a walkway. So these are all things that push the limits of what you can possibly fit onto this site. That's my professional opinion, as someone who's been in this business since 1972. I'd like to see, I'd like to see you not weaken any of these comments, add the barrier in. And one other thing, you are the legally empowered planning body of this town. The Zoning Board of Appeals is really, acts more as a quasi-judicial board, in my experience. And I would say, especially since you mentioned that you have relationships with people on the zoning board, that you offer your services, your advice, to help them deal with planning issues that you deal with on every application, and they don't necessarily deal with. If you could do this as a community, work together as the two boards, I think we can get a compromise reached that meets everyone's objectives. And I also agree with your comment, let Mr. Boynton, that the primary recipient of these comments is going to be the zoning board, not the state. The state wants to know that their pri, their written criteria are met, that it qualifies under their statutes, but they're not going to be concerned about traffic and, and all of that, and trespassing on people's property and views and all of that. So that's really it, I won't take up any more of your time. I know this is an initial review, I think it's a great start, and I will be happy to volunteer to help if I can.
Thank you. Okay. So I understand the idea about a fence, it makes sense, the only issue, not the only issue, I don't know if there's one planned or not, I don't remember it being mentioned, but the other issue is, there may be a problem with that may, how many trees you can keep may also be impacted if you try to put a fence up there as well. So if, if it's treed, you either have to cut through the trees, take some trees, or put it on the other side of the trees, and I don't know the topography quite well enough to say the feasibility of that, but the idea makes sense.
And if you look at. That's the kind of thing that comes up in the actual hearing.
Correct, correct, that's why, it's, it's definitely a good point that that's something that if this were before us as a hearing, we'd go through that, we've done, we just did it on the last one with moving the fence, you know, and we just, we literally went through that. The benef, the difficulty in this situation is that it's under Mass General Law 40B, and it doesn't come before the Planning Board.
Understood.
Because we don't have enough affordable housing, and so if this project came after, it wouldn't come under 40B, and we'd be able to control all of that. So that is kind of an unfortunate part for Prescott Street of where we are just currently. But I think that is a, it's a worthwhile point, I just want to figure out how we can, if we can incorporate it into this, or if that's something for later on.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there is a portion of the site that projects back towards Prescott Street. It's kind of triangular in shape, and they're showing a wooded line, presumably preserved woodlands. Another reason that the fence has to go at the property line, the fence could go inside that, that tree line, and you wouldn't disturb any of the trees, you preserve the woods behind, and you give privacy to the people who live on Prescott Street, which is why, when I say privacy fence, I'm not talking about chain-link fence, I'm talking about something opaque that will maintain the, the character and integrity of what they have today.
Can we sum another of what we did on Southern Street with the fence that we put up, that we had them put up there, which kind of interspersed the tree line? But it was, it was, it was challenging to figure out how to make the fence, because it couldn't be straight, because you had to kind of avoid some of the trees, but we've, we've done that.
Ms. Enright has my contact information, so I would be happy to stay involved with you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks for stepping out of retirement for a few minutes.
Eight years.
Are you living in New Jersey?
No, I, when I retired, I moved to Beverly.
Okay.
Because my son lives in New Ha, North Andover. My other son lives in, believe it or not, neither of them went to college in Boston, but both married women from Boston, so they're not coming back to the New York metro area.
I've been there, done that, gotcha. All right, Jean, do you need us to vote on this tonight?
I think.
Yeah, we should, right?
Vote to turn them into the manager's office at this point?
So I, I mean, I just, I continue to be a little. So, I, I mean, I just, I continue to be a little, um, just frustrated that we make these, there's several places where we make conclusions, and we offer no remedy, no, um, next step even. I mean, we say this compounds the massing, period. And then, I mean, could we say we recommend?
No, because it's all subject to negotiation.
That's, but I'm starting the negotiation with...
You don't wanna start the negotiation now.
But I also don't know what to recommend.
Yeah.
Like, like, let's say the massing, right? That, we recognize massing could be an issue. We're not in a position, I don't think, to make a recommendation, because I don't know if it should be five stories, four stories, three stories. We wanna see views, we'd wanna see what the numbers mean. Does that get us to our 10%? Does that get us to 10.2%? Like, how does it look in comparison to the neighborhood when we actually see it? That's something that, if we had it as a, uh, as a special permit, would take four or five hearings. So that's why we're, I don't think we're in a position to make a recommendation on what the, what, what the remedy should be. All we can say at this point is, hey, identify, this is a red flag. This could be a problem.
For, but can we, I'm sorry, Chair, continue your...
My point is, I don't think we, we're not in a position factually to be able to make a recommendation on most of the things. So that's why we haven't, and I don't, I don't think we should, uh, I don't think it's our, I don't, one, I don't think they care. Two, it's not our, our, it's not our job. It's the ZBA's job. And three, I don't think we have enough facts to do it, other than really small things like, you know, hey, let's keep some trees. Like, that's kind of an obvious one.
Well, that's, it's pretty specific, but I, I mean...
It's obvious. It's easy. It's, it's simple. It's, you know, and it probably won't happen anyway, but it would be nice.
But, but I also think just a conclusion without further study of this issue is warranted, or something like that, so that you can't just say, oh, well, they made this, you know, but we're gonna keep moving on. And if we say you should study it further, and they don't study it further, um, or they don't have those four hearings, not, and I'm not talking about mass housing, I'm talking about the ZBA, or...
Or perhaps should be addressed. We're not saying how, we're just saying the massing should be addressed.
But again, with, I mean, I know, I, I know I said that this is ultimately a guideline or something the ZBA will look at. It still has to be addressed to mass housing. So I, I, I just, I, again, I don't know too many of these, but looking at their findings, I, I don't think they're looking for recommendations about building guys. In fact, when we went to the site visit, we were specifically told that they were gonna ignore that. So, like, if we make recommendations on what to do, they're gonna ignore it. They, they told us that. Like, if we say you need to study traffic, they're gonna be like, okay, the ZBA will do it.
So will we have the ability to rec, make, be more specific with the ZBA on what they should do, or...
I mean, not as a board, because it's not, it's their job. I mean, honestly, these things, most of the time, I think, John, in the past, this hasn't even come to the planning board.
No, no.
This is like, added for us.
I mean, because we don't have any jurisdiction directly on it. They could choose, as they've done in the past, to ignore us completely and say, we don't want your input at all. We know how to do this ourselves. What we're trying to do is to partner with them, and this is the first step in that process. I mean, the ideal situation would be to have a joint meeting with them or something like that, where we start to go through it. But we can't sit in the official meet, their official meeting, and be part of the, the process, but we can get our issues on the table with them, and this is, I think, the most nuanced way of doing that.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't, I very much don't want to overstep. So that's why I'm trying, because we do have so much experience with these things, I think it's easy to overstep and say, yeah, this is what we would do, and this is how we would go about it, and this is how we would get it to 250 and four stories, and we would do this and recommend this. I, I think that currently is overstepping. I think there will be a place for those discussions later on, but I think it has to be more ZBA-initiated. I think they, I think, I think it needs to be initiated by them.
If, if I could just add to that point, you deal with these issues on every application. The zoning board doesn't, which is why I'm suggesting that you offer to assist them in dealing with these issues and explain to them, describe to them how you've dealt with them in the past and what could potentially work here. Obviously, ultimately, it's gonna be their decision. But, um, if they know that they have a, a planning body and a professional planner, and Ms. Enright, to, um, give them advice, you know, I think it would be short-sighted not to accept it.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to speak with the ZBA chair to let him know, and if we want later on, when this ultimately, if it ultimately comes up, we can offer an actual letter, if we want from the board, offering our assistance, but...
Potentially, if they're interested, I really like that idea of a joint meeting. We've done that with the select board.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It would be up to them.
No, I'm not even sure the law allows for it. The 40B is pretty specific, so that would be something we'd have to find out.
Interesting.
But it could be more of a public meeting and just informational meeting, right? Where, where both boards could ask questions, but not, there'd be no deliberation decision.
So again, there's this 40B thing coming up, that maybe we can get some answers there. I don't know the answer to those things. I've not, I've not encountered it. So we'll find out. Okay, so, uh, we need to take a vote. So, uh, so you can have a seat.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so can I get a motion to, um, for the letter drafted by Ms. Enright, zero Prescott Street mass housing site approval comments to the town, to Andrew Shapiro, to compile as part of the town's, um, submittal to mass housing? Sounds right?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this will be submitted as is to, uh, Andrew to be compiled.
We did not decide to include the fence.
No, no. I mean, if you want to talk about that further, I just don't think we're ready for that. For the ZBA, do you think about?
Well, let's keep it in mind for the next opportunity, because we seem to be in agreement that it was a good idea.
I think, I think the idea is a good idea. I just don't know if a fence, the logistics are a good idea. So again, that's, that's like a recommendation that I, I'm not ready to make as a, something that should be done, but it's the right idea. It goes under screening and privacy and all of that.
Well, we see the final plans, and exactly, and the topos and everything, and the limited clearing, well, much better ideal, exactly what they're proposing to do and how they're proposing to do it.
And there's time.
Even like, you know, the ability, the slide, the building back a few feet, can they do it? Because of the constraints on the other side, that, that's why you need the drawings.
So what, and I would say, sir, do you have, um, do you have the information, RCG, David Steinberg, or their contact information?
I don't believe I do.
Maybe you can get it, or it's probably part of the plan. They're pretty receptive to feedback, so, I mean, there's gonna be still months of this to go if it does go forward. I think entertaining a fence, especially in the early part of the drawings and the stations, would, they'd much rather hear about it now, right, as you know, than hear about it in a meeting six months from now. So talk to them about it, and they may be able to incorporate, it might be an easy thing to incorporate, to make people happy, and to have potentially less resistance, might be a good thing for everybody, so...
Could I get that contact from you if I call you at the office? Appreciate that.
Talk to their, talk to their people, and maybe it can be addressed.
Would your, would your memo that you're passing along today that you've just voted on, would that include the comment about the fence?
No. No, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna add that in, just because it's, again, I think that's a very specific, um, feature that would need to, real analysis of where it should be. So I think it's a good ide, I think the idea is a good idea, but I think it should just be addressed kind of naturally in the process.
Okay. I mean, it clearly goes to quality of life for existing residents, so...
Right, but I'm, we're not going into four stories versus five stories versus how many parking spots either. The, the, we're trying to stay out of the details.
Aye, I understand.
For now.
As long as you have another opportunity to bring it up.
There will be, yeah, you will have another, you will have many opportunities to bring it up.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
All right. Uh, can I, anything, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 1st?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next meeting is when, Gene?
August 12th. Because August 2nd is National Night Out, or 5th, I'm sorry, yeah, August 5th. So your meeting is pushed a week.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.